Welcome to the regular meeting of council for Tuesday, January the 11th, 2022. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on traditional territories of the Cree and Algonquin peoples and other indigenous people. We recognize and offer our gratitude for their care and teachings about the earth and our culture. We thank them for the sharing of this land with us. Meeting called to order, we will have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
It resolved the agenda for the regular meeting, council number January 11th, 2022. It approved as circulated to all members of council with the addition of a verbal COVID update addressed as cited.
All in favor? Motion carried. Any declaration of the community interest? None noted. Petitions and delegations? None noted, acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
It resolved that council approved the minutes of the following meetings, the regular meeting of council. By councillor Adams, seconded by councillor Adams.
All in favor? Motion carried. Reports of municipal officers and communications, item 6.1, Northern Throttle Drag Races. The terminal, policeman, and veteran.
Good afternoon, council, your worship and council, and Happy New Year to everyone. We've had the annual request from Team Northern Throttle come through, and this year they're looking at wanting to host three drag racing events out at the airport through the summer months. And we're looking at council to approve these events in principle only. The first one's in June, the second one would be in July, and the third event would be in August. The reason we're looking for council to approve the events in principle is it's, of course, we're pending any pandemic restrictions, and then we can just, no pun intended, but we could throttle back on them a little bit if we have to. Team Northern Throttle organizes more sports events on an annual basis in Kirkland Lake. The summer drag races take place at the Kirkland Lake Airport. The events are recognized regionally and bring people to town, be it as spectators or participants. In December 2021, we received a letter from Team Northern Throttle requesting to use the airport to host the three events in the summer. The first being June 22nd to June 27th, and further request to book the airport for second and third drag racing events on July 6th to July 11th, as well as July, August 17th to 22nd inclusively. It, like in the, in the past couple of years, it should be noted that TNT well lies with the Tomiscomi Health Unit and are committed to following all public health guidelines and will submit a COVID management plan to the municipality. The recommendations provided are on council's wishes to respect its previous decisions and precedents, supporting groups and tourism throughout our community. We're logically assuming that council will approve these events, however, it's solely, solely up to you as well. TNT has made it clear that the success of these events depend on sufficient advanced publicity to attract spectators' participants amidst competing regional events. So they would start off, you know, hitting the ground running probably tomorrow with their looking for their sponsorships and their advertising, and they'd have to put in all that. Of course, in there, in that would be pending pandemic restrictions because we don't, we really don't know what's going to happen come June. Alternatively, the council may reject this request and, you know, based on the pandemic situation will not approve sufficiently by June and September to warrant the potential risk to the community created by close contact event involving out-of-district attendees. This may be a UNRDO council decision without support by the province or Tomiscomi Health Unit. So solely, it can solely be up to council. Council should note that this alternative may be difficult for, for Team Northern Throttle as it'll likely be in a financial strain caused by the ongoing pandemic, which you, you can assume that, that, that's a hardship on them. There is a daily fee that we would charge for them to use the airport. It's $400, $420 a day. Special event user fee in our bylaw translates to $2,500 per event, which would bring in about $7,500 after all three are said and done. The airport is considered closed during the event, so we cannot service any kind of air traffic whatsoever due to the obstacles and the people and things that are on the runway and around the runway. We'd have to notify all our Orange Air, the hospital, as well as the EMS people that, you know, the airport is closed, so they'd have to find alternatives for, for patient transfers and emergencies. And without sounding redundant, we all know, you know, through past reports on this annual request that the drag races do result in, you know, some damage to the runway. We do closely monitor that to ensure that any, any loose particles or rubber or anything that comes up, we, we try to get that before it could become a problem with aircraft. And we've been successfully doing that for a number of years now. The runway still isn't in decent shape, and if there's no reason, you can't support this kind of activity at this time. The request from Team Northern Throttle is consistent with the following strategic priorities that would be relevant to this decision, and that's to review opportunities to increase tourism in around Kirkland Lake and be fiscally, fiscally responsible and to properly manage infrastructure for the purpose of extending the life of an asset. So like I said, it, once they're all said and done, it's a little more than $7,500 for the, for the airport. Any questions?
Councillor Owens? Owen?
Yeah, no, I don't have a question. I just want to comment that we have a good history with the Team Northern Throttle. And last year, we kind of made them jump through the list. We were trying to do our due diligence as a council and ensure the community was safe, and at the same time, they were volunteers working very hard to put on the event. They certainly established themselves as being honest, reputable, and living up to the terms of the agreement. The other thing I wanted to note, since these events happen during the summertime, well, fixed-wing aircraft in terms of medic evacuations would not be able to fly. During the summertime, there are less weather conditions that ground the helicopters that fly into the airport to take out emergency patients. They, they land at the helipad in, right at the hospital, and they fly. Yes, it's less comfortable in terms of transfer of patient. But I don't want people to think that the closing of the airport means that all patients would have to travel by ambulance down the road for emergency. So I certainly would support this group by, by more than showing themselves to be benefit to the community and add to the community by, by moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion?
It resolved that report number 2000 points. Drag races, summer airports. The council approved in principle pending any of the restrictions. The direct staff finalized agreements with the team. Airport goes to a great race. The council approved in principle any of the restrictions. Team Northern Throttle's request, summer airport, approved for regular system licenses, July 11th.
I hate to interrupt, Sean, but we can't hear you speak.
At all?
No, you're, I think you're too far from the mic.
I read the motion here on paper, but it's, it is hard to hear you speak.
Okay, is that better?
Much better.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, that any changes caused by the COVID-19 pandemic be communicated to Team Northern Thunder a minimum of 14 days in advance of the scheduled. Events in fact.
All in favor?
Moved by councillor Owens and seconded by councillor Adams.
All in favor? Motion carried.
It's the point of order here. We can't see who's voting in what direction, sitting in council room here. I'm just noting that, so if something's defeated or whatever, it might be nice to let us know, not who voted, but what the vote was. And Sean, I'm not worried about it, like this, this is your first time, and we're going with flow. I just wanted that noted, thanks.
Okay, I guess note that if you have to be against it, just speak up.
Yes. Reports of municipal officers again, item 6.2, Civic Park. That North funding agreement will progress.
Thank you through your worship. Last July, we advised council that we had submitted a stage one application to FedNOR for their Canada Community Revitalization Fund. It's essentially a fund that the federal government set up to try to inject life back into the municipal downtowns in light of what the havoc that COVID had wreaked. At that meeting, council instructed staff to submit a stage two application. We did, and this, just recently, we were advised that we were successful. So FedNOR has approved funding to cover 75% of project costs to a maximum of $285,000. Municipality will be responsible for the remaining 25% of project costs to a maximum of $96,250. That, of course, would be drawn from the 2022 capital budget should council decide to approve it. We have attached the bylaw in case council does decide to approve the application, and if so, then we will proceed.
Comments from councillors? Councillor Owen?
Yeah, in reading the report, it was about $9,000 change difference from what we had talked about earlier and what's being asked for now. I wasn't a big fan of spending more money in that area than I have other areas in the town. Francis Japius, which has no recreational facility at all. And Swastika, which has one playground. So I'm, I'm wanting to go along with the original allotment of money that we agreed to, but I'm not in favor of increasing the amount at this time.
You know, we don't have an explanation as to why FedNOR offered more money. I believe that it would probably be come back to how they're allocating funds on a regional basis or within Northern Ontario. The, as it says in the report, you don't have to spend up to that level either. It's a recommendation that you take the higher amount because it's, chances are that with the supply chain interruptions and everything else, the inflation, that some of those original estimates may be off now. So that would help with that, but you're still not obligated in any way to spend more than what you're comfortable with. As the contract says, it's up to 800, $285,000.
Thanks, love.
Thanks for the clarification.
Can you see our comments? Can you see us, or do we have to speak up?
Go ahead, Eugene, I don't, didn't see us.
I'm just wondering, because I, well, I just noticed that councillor White also had her hand up, and I had my hand up, and I'm just thinking, the only one you recognize is the one in front of you, so I just wondered if there was some issue with cameras. But anyway, I think it's a great idea when you can get 40 grand for a $10,000 investment. I think it's a, it's a great deal, and if I can get $4 for every buck I spend, I'd be more than happy to, to spend it. Thank you very much.
Did councillor White have her hand up?
Yes, I, yeah, so I just, I want to say that I definitely support this. I'm in the position to see the activity at Civic almost daily, and it is an incredible area within town. The new additions have been incredible, and honestly and truly, well, I say no to found money. Great job, everybody that worked on it, so thank you very much.
You, councillor White. Any other comments? Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, well, I know where you're coming from, councillor Owen, but I think that's another matter. Hopefully, maybe the staff will look at some sort of funding for maybe playgrounds and shops or whatnot. But, you know, this, this what they're presenting to us today, to me, I think we should go for it because we're getting more money, we're putting a little bit more into it. So I'm going to support this one here, and we hope that maybe next time the staff will come up with a way to address, add info or something like that, about the playground, shop, or Swastika. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shaba. Councillor Owen?
Yeah, just to comment on the technical difficulties we're having tonight. Yes, Mayor Kylie is seeing the same thing that I'm seeing, then no, we can't see the people that aren't in the room when they want to speak.
You just need to change the speaker view to all gallery instead of the one who's speaking. I can see it on the TV from here, you just have to change the gallery view to all participants. Upper right-hand corner.
Oh, cool. Okay. You're hired as a new IT guy. Anyways, thanks.
Thank you, that clarifies, makes it a lot easier. Was there any further comments from councillors? None noted, we have a motion?
It resolved that report number 2022, the 002 entitled Civic Park FedNOR Funding Agreement be received and that mayor and clerk be authorized to execute an agreement with the Federal Economic Development Agency for Northern Ontario FedNOR for funding under the Canada Community Revitalization Fund, up to $285,000 towards expansion and improvement of Kirkland Lake's primary shared multipurpose community space, Civic Park. And the staff be directed to include the municipal share of the project to a maximum of $96,250 in the 2022 bylaw.
All in favor?
I have a mover, councillor Adams, and a seconder councillor Hymanoff.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.3, signing authority policy. Sean?
Okay, so I have a signing authority policy here, thank you worship and council. As you, as you'll see later on in the, in the agenda, we have a new treasurer in place to a point that at this point in time, we're going to take off the best deputy treasurer and add on to treasurer for, for signing, signing purposes. We had one last, last, at the last meeting as well, we've updated it, I myself on, so now we're just looking to further, further improve the signing authority policy. Let me know if you have any questions.
None noted, we have a motion?
It resolved that memorandum number 2022, or 001 entitled Signing Authority Policy be received, that the updated signing policy, authority policy is approved, and that staff be directed to insert the updated signing policy into the corporate policy manual. Moved by councillor White, seconded by councillor Shaba.
All in favor? Motion carried. Consideration of, oh, sorry, 6.4 COVID update. Bonnie Sackrider?
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. The modified step two of the roadmap to reopen means that some municipal departments are operating differently. The Tech Centennial Library does remain open with maximum capacity of 15 individuals per floor. The gift shop at the Museum of Northern History remains open while the remaining parts of the building are closed. The community complex is closed with the exception of one elite athlete permitted to train under the legislation. The Recreation Department continues to offer use of skis and snowshoes through curbside pickup. The Civic Rink remains open from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. daily. Virtual fitness classes are being offered, and free cross-country ski lessons are available three days a week during the closure. Buildings that are closed have laid off part-time workers, and redeployment to other facilities has occurred for some full-time staff. Staff remaining in buildings are required to wear face coverings with limited exceptions, maintaining distance, and actively screen each day prior to entering the workplace. Some staff are using vacation entitlements to stay home with children to assist with virtual learning. When staff are required to be off work due to isolation requirements, time off is funded through sick time, float days, and other government supports for those who are eligible. Vaccination rates for municipal staff have increased to 95%. Individuals who are not fully vaccinated continue to complete an education program and have rapid antigen tests twice a week. Of interest to our local small businesses, the Ontario Government has introduced new supports for many of the businesses that are most impacted by public health measures in response to the Omicron variant. Online applications for the programs will open on January 18th with a full list of eligible business types provided prior to the launch of the online portal. At this time, I will present the update from Ms. Schumacher, Executive Director of Tech Pioneer Residence. The home is on declared outbreak on two units, Tech and Tobin, with six confirmed resident cases and four confirmed staff cases. One positive resident has been hospitalized, but not from COVID-19 infection. We are following all directives from Public Health and in daily communications with the outbreak team from Tomiscomi Health Unit. We've been instructed to limit visitors to only those true essential caregivers who provide hands-on care or emotional support to residents who would have negative effects should they not visit. All staff are being tested daily prior to their shifts, wearing N95 masks for the duration of their shifts. Increased housekeeping of high-touch services and auditing are in place. Any resident displaying symptoms are isolated immediately, but this variant is very transmissible and is spreading quickly and easily. We've communicated to all resident family members with a personal phone call and provide a daily update to our Facebook page, and encourage members to call the charge nurse for updates, message the Facebook page, or email. We are having a large impact to staffing. Any staff displaying one symptom are not permitted to work and must be tested and retested. If staff test positive, they are excluded from duty for a minimum for 10 days. Tech Pioneer has reached out to Plan A, which is a staffing agency, to assist with coverage of PSW and RPN shifts which are the most affected. This concludes the COVID-19 update for this week.
Thank you, councillor.
Shaba.
Shaba. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sackrider. You indicated that you got 95% increase in the vax, of the vaccine, would that be jab number two or jab number three? So I'm saying 95% increase, everybody's got three or two, at least two, so what's, what is it, please?
We are using the provincial definition of fully vaccinated, which is two doses. If the province does change their, their definition of fully vaccinated to include the booster, then we will do so as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? None noted, we have motion to receive that report?
Yes, moved by councillor Owen, seconded by councillor Owen, be resolved that the verbal COVID-19 update be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Number seven, consideration notices of motions? None noted. Item number eight, introduction reading and consideration of bylaws?
Yes, we have a couple of bylaws to start with, your worship and the council, that we do annually. First one, which is the bylaw to follow as we go forward for the next session. So if I have any questions, I have my law.
None noted?
Moved by councillor Shaba, seconded by councillor Adams, be resolved. It resolved that the following bylaw read at first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk, seal of the corporation, fixed there to bylaw number 22001, being a bylaw authorized for all current expenditure to develop.
Sean, your, your voice is fading again.
Yeah, sorry.
Are you having anybody in favor in the second?
Yeah, so moved by councillor Shaba and seconded by councillor Adams.
All in favor? Motion carried?
Yes, I have a second bylaw, basically, that looks after the taxation for payments and taxation and the interest rate for the year 2022 coming into effect. Just ask anyone who has any questions.
None noted?
It resolved the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation, fixed there to bylaw number 22002, being a bylaw to provide interim tax levy and to provide for the payment of taxes and to provide for penalty and interest of 1.25% per mile. Moved by councillor Owen, seconded by councillor Owens.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 8.3, Kirkland Lake user-free bylaw?
Yes, so thank you, Mayor Kylie, the council. We did pass a user-free bylaw at the last meeting, did have some updates to it that's just more administrative to get it up to date. So we went to pass a new bylaw, just a few little changes to material. It resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation, fixed there to bylaw number 22003, being a bylaw to establish for the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake. Moved by councillor Adams, seconded by councillor White.
All in favor? Motion carried? Motion carried.
By law number eight point four is a by law to pass. Establish a by law for cemetery fees. This is similar to the one we passed in. December, we did have a few updates to it. Some of the things that changed for two thousand. Two. You have a by law here. Be resolved that the following by law be read at first, second and third time numbered pass. Signed by the mayor and the clerk and seal of corporation be fixed there to by law number twenty two zero zero four being a by law to establish fees for the Kirkland Lake Cemetery. Moved by councillor Ivanoff, seconded by councillor White.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item eight point five by law to appoint an interim clerk.
So we have a by law to to look at setting up an interim clerk. So just want to give a little bit of background on on this. Our clerk left in December of two thousand twenty one. We do have a new clerk that is that is hired and coming for February first, two thousand twenty two. So we're pretty excited about that. Up until the clerk comes to Kirkland Lake, I will be looking to to look after the clerk duties and then at that point it will change. I have I have a by law to to read if anybody has any comments beforehand.
None noted.
It resolve that following by law be read at first, second and third time numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and seal of the corporation be affixed there to. By law number twenty two zero zero five being a by law to appoint a clerk for the town of Kirkland Lake. Moved by councillor Adams, seconded by councillor Owens.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item eight point six by law to appoint interim deputy treasurer.
Okay, so I have a by law here. I did make a little clerical error under the by law to appoint I put treasurer to. It resolve that following by law be read at first, second and third time numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk. The seal of the corporation be affixed there to by law number twenty two zero zero six being a by law to appoint a deputy treasurer of the town Kirkland Lake. Yeah. No problem. And as amended. Moved by councillor Owen, seconded by councillor Shaba.
All in favor? Motion carried. By law to appoint a treasurer.
So under eight point seven, we have a by law to appoint a new treasurer. Yeah, just a little bit of background on this. So we added a new treasurer that started on Monday. Yeah, very excited. Lloyd Crocker filling the role of the town of Kirkland Lake. I have a by law, so be resolved that the following by law be read at first, second and third time numbered pass. Signed by the mayor and the clerk, the seal of the corporation of fixed there to by law number twenty two zero zero seven being a by law to appoint a treasurer. Moved by councillor Adams, seconded by councillor Shaba.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item eight point eight. By law to authorize the agreement with Fednor.
I'll go ahead and read the by law. This is what we talked about in the earlier. Report. It resolve that the following by law be read at first, second and third time numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there to. By law number twenty two zero zero eight being a by law to authorize the mayor and the clerk to execute an agreement with the federal economic development agency for Northern Ontario Fednor. For the Canada Community Revitalization Program, funding for improvements to Civic Park. Moved by councillor Ivanoff, seconded by councillor White.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item eight point nine by law to amend the. Parking by law.
Thank you. So if you remember in our last meeting, December fourteenth, we had a report to council for the parking by law. That was approved at that point to make the changes. It resolve that the following by law be read at first, second, third time numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be fixed there to. By law number twenty two zero zero nine being a by law to amend by law fifteen zero one seven for the regulation of parking for the town of Kirkland Lake. Moved by councillor Ivanoff, seconded by councillor Owens.
All in favor? Motion carried. Questions from council through staff? None noted. Notices of motion? None noted. Councillor returns words. Councillor Shaba.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank all. Staff. I mean, the road school for doing a wonderful job. I mean, today and yesterday was a stream of coal. And they're doing the best they can to remove the stone of the longer Dublin Road. Just want to thank them very much for the job we've done.
Thank you. I just like to wish Peter George off in his retirement all the best. We appreciated. His. Efforts over the years and welcome Lloyd Crocker as the treasurer. Lloyd's familiar with our operation as an auditor for. An accounting firm that did our audit, so welcome to Lloyd. Anything else noted? Motion?
It resolve that the verbal updates. Members of council be received. Moved by councillor Adams, seconded by councillor Ivanoff.
All in favor? Motion carried. You have a motion to move into closed session?
It resolve that council move into closed session for section two thirty nine two to discuss one matter relating to labor relations or employee negotiations. Moved by councillor Ivanoff, seconded by councillor Shaba.
All in favor? Motion carried.